...of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, who makes it possible with liberty and justice for all.
The compliance with the other public media chapters, December 1st, 1970, for the 1975 state New Jersey advocate notice of the reading of South River Board of Education was provided in the following manner. On October 1st of 2018, this was actually due to the following newspapers, home news Tribune and Newsweek. Also on October 1st of 2018, this was published as South River, placed in the post of Board of Education Administration building. On that date, this was also posted at the South River Board for itself. One call?
Mr. Andre?
Here.
Mr. Bazak?
Mrs. Bazak, please.
Mrs. Beck?
Here.
Mrs. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mr. Rosano?
Here.
Mrs. Abanik?
Here.
Mr. Wailuda?
Here.
Mrs. Cassiano?
The old board members have been in Scott, February 20, uh, February 23, June 28, August 7, and September 24, September 27, and July 1/26. What was your pleasure?
Both minutes.
Second.
Mrs. Rosano, second if I missed anything. I may bash the back.
Sorry.
All favor. Okay. Two to five.
Um, we have quite a few items on the agenda for the use of facilities, but just additional since Monday, the South River Football Club, uh, the South River Foundation for Educational Excellence, and the South River Primary School PTA. And there's an adjustment to the South River High School Cheer, uh, Friday, October 26th, from seven to nine.
Motion, use of facilities and court support policies.
Second.
That's the name, Mr. Andre, on the table.
Hi.
Okay.
Being resolved, the Board of Education hereby certifies that it is a receipt of the financial report, which indicates that no major account has been over expended and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. The Finance Committee recommends that the reports of the Board Secretary and the Treasurer of School money for August 2018 be approved and also moved.
Motion, Mrs. Cruz?
Second.
Questioned by Ms. Walton, all favor.
Hi.
Okay. This time, let me introduce the public, any comments or questions? Um, on the agenda items only, any questions? Uh, listed for, listed for ten minutes, and it'll also be coming to the podium, for you in your dress. Anyone can do anything. Page one, we're probably on the question.
Mr. Wailuda, may I just go back to the use of facilities? Apparently I missed one, and then everybody else missed it, so. Can't believe that. Uh, we do have one more item to add, Ann Carrera, uh, like, use of facilities on October 29th.
Do you have one more?
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Then the motion.
Second.
Question, many, Ms. Nielsen, second, and Ms. Roseanne, on the favor.
Hi.
All second. And we'll go back to September's question, Mrs. Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Wailuda. Uh, the first item on my report today is our high school focus group visit. Uh, at the beginning of the school year, I asked our high school assistant principal, Nicole Yorick, um, to work with our student board representative, Victoria, um, and to gather a group of students from various grade levels, uh, and create a Rams High School Focus Group. And, uh, this initiative is really just aligned with district goal number one, which is to incorporate and enhance our communication with our stakeholders and community members, and who are more important stakeholders than, than our kids, than our students. Um, so in early October, we had our first meeting. Uh, we had, we had lunch, which, uh, the kids really enjoyed. Um, so they were, they were happy to be there and have a special lunch that day. But, uh, we really discussed just their views about, um, what good instruction looks like, sounds like, feels like for them, um, how they feel about safety and security at their school, uh, the clubs and activities that are available to them, and the relationships that they have with their peers. Those were some of the topics that, that we were able to cover. Our lunch was, um, about, it was almost an, an hour or so, and then some students stayed back to talk a little bit, um, further, um, on some other items, too. But I found the feedback to be very honest. Um, they were very open, willing to share their point of views. Um, they were really very honest about what makes their school great, um, but also what areas they would like to see change or improve, um, and be enhanced. So, we, uh, we took some selfies and some pictures. We posted these on our, on our Facebook page. Um, and we'll meet again in a few months, and they all seem very positive, um, to meet again, and, and really wanting to, um, to just share that experience again. And I just found out this morning that we've been asked to also put our, um, focus group in, in the yearbook, um, as well as a team or a club, so we should do that, too. Um, but it was a great experience, and then Victoria, when, when it's her time to share, she can certainly, um, add to that, um, she was present. Um, I also want to discuss tonight our preschool expansion. We've been posting on our social media and our website, um, what's happening with, with the preschool expansion. Uh, the district went out for this, uh, grant application in late August. Um, we completed the thirty-one-page application, um, in, gosh, less than, less than two weeks, including, uh, a budget workbook. I, I've found out since, uh, since we applied, that there were several districts who applied and didn't receive the funding, so that made me even more proud of the application that our administrators were able to, um, to put in place. Um, but we basically are receiving, uh, six hundred and eighty-three, six hundred and forty thousand dollars to expand our current preschool. So we will take our part-time preschool programs to full-time, full-day programs. Um, we'll be expanding our classes to four, uh, two at the primary school, two at the elementary school. So we'll be adding staff, we'll use this funding for, for staff. Um, we'll use it for some startup costs, such as the furniture, supplies, um, just really make it what a, what a preschool room should look like. And, um, and for parents who have already had their students enrolled in our current preschool, they will be receiving a reimbursement for the tuition that they've paid so far. Um, so we're, we're excited about that. We're looking at the program to begin in early January. We're required to have it up and running by January 2nd, and, um, and we're, we're just excited to give the opportunity to, uh, to our community. And tomorrow is our first professional development day for teachers. Uh, we have an early release day for students, and our teachers are staying back for the full day for professional development. We have, um, a lot of professional development that's taking place in the current programs that our teachers are implementing. So we have a program, um, called Level Learning Intervention, that's for ASI teachers. They'll be receiving training in that. Um, our teachers who have been implementing foundations will receive another, um, more extensive training on that. Um, we have, uh, training for social and emotional learning at the high school, uh, just really a very, uh, wide variety of training. Our PE teachers are getting together to develop a dance unit, uh, which is actually required by QSEC that we have in place, and that kids really want also, so they'll be working on that. Um, so we are all over the district tomorrow on many different activities that are targeted to what the teachers are, are actually implementing in the classroom, and we're trying to make sure that we weren't doing anything canned, one-size-fits-all, and just really putting things in place that teachers could, um, could use the, the very next day. And, uh, we have four of these days planned for the year, four half-day professional development days, and we fund our professional development activities through Title I, and Title II, and sometimes Title IV. Okay? And so concludes my report.
I have a question, okay?
Sure.
Uh, I understand from what you said, Mrs. Archer, that, uh, tomorrow's a, a early release for students, so there is school tomorrow, because I'm hearing from some parents there's no school tomorrow.
We do have school tomorrow, it's early release day.
Just want to make sure that everybody gets that. Thank you.
Mm-huh. Absolutely. We do have school tomorrow.
And I just have a question. Uh, with regard to the preschool expansion, so this funding is in place for this year, and what about years to come?
So, we actually reached out to the state to find out what, um, what it looks like for nineteen twenty. We received notice that we will have the funding in place for school year nineteen twenty, and we have an upcoming meeting with state officials to discuss, um, we won't have to go through the entire application process again, but we will have to go through some process in order to, um, align the, the number of students we're serving to the funds that will be provided. Um, so we're set for eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty at minimum.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Remember your pleasure on the report.
Move the superintendent's report.
Second.
Questioned by Mrs. Bush, all favor.
Hi.
All, okay. Question, Mrs. Archer, uh, I think the board appreciates what she does since we've been here, you know, the power, and, and covering the need, and, and, you know, the, the, this would be a very challenging, just a time, a, a, same way.
No, I appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Carter. Yes, all around.
Yep. I agree.
Thank you.
And now the consent resolution. There's only, anything to be, the second consent resolution? Okay.
The South River Board of Education, by means of a consent resolution, adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time, whereas the broad list of resolutions are hereby adopted by said Board of Education in whole, as if the same way individually acted upon under Athletics Items 1 and 2, under Building and Grounds Item 1, under Finance Items 1 through sixteen, under Instruction Items 1 through six, under Policy and Legislation Item 1, and Human Resources Items 1 through eleven.
Question, please.
Question, Mr. Roseanne.
Second.
Question, Ms. Beck, Collins, Turner, Lewis, all call.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mrs. Abanik?
Yes.
Mr. Wailuda?
Yes, I wanted to just say we have, um, the Athletes of the Month we have for September, cross-country runners, Marissa Italiano and Matt Cox. In October, in girls soccer, was Hannah Zito, and in boys soccer, was Brandon Santos. I wanted to mention, um, the donation from Mr. Frank Mula, um, towards High School Drama Club again, from class of sixty-eight. He really enjoys following everything on Facebook for all the, uh, drum productions that happen in high school. And then another one since the other day, um, accepted donation from the Harris Corporation, which is a twelve-hundred-dollar donation to the Robotics Club, our T A Robotics Team. And so concludes my report.
Any more questions? Ms. Abanik, all favor.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Wailuda. Under the Buildings and Grounds Report, uh, we approved, under consent resolution, the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for the 2018-2020 school years. Uh, part of that report is the health and safety evaluation of school buildings checklist, and all schools were found to be in confluence. And so concludes my report.
Anyone? Instruction, the simple status?
I'm sorry?
Can I do one?
My next.
One, two.
We have one new item, um, since Monday, sixteen-approved contract Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, Home Instruction Service Provider, 2018-19 school year.
Anyone? No, Mr. President?
There's nothing news this.
Oh, it's okay.
I'm sorry. There's nothing news this Monday night, Mr. President, but, uh, for the edification of those watching at home, uh, the South River Public Library, which the nation we are accepting this evening, uh, has donated, I think it's three hundred books, and they're all young adult books for the high school. And I talked to the librarian today, she said there's more coming, so we want to thank the library for that.
And, and any other negotiations?
Just we'll be starting with the SRA soon.
All, thank you.
No changes since Monday evening.
And, Mr. Nielsen?
We have five new changes tonight, sir. Seven, approved point, Jennifer Scheiben, registered nurse, 2018-2019 school year. Eight, approved resignation, Patrick Holes, custodian slash fieldsman. Nine, approved transfer, Meredith Metus Wilcox, from elementary school teacher to middle school special education teacher. Ten, approved appoint, Stephanie Vinci, elementary school teacher, 2018-2019 school year. And eleven, resignation for retirement, Helena Aquavella, primary school teacher.
Anyone have anything? Mr. Andre?
I have nothing, sir.
And, Mr. Rosano?
School community relations. See, I have, uh, six items. Uh, first one is the Harlem Wizards are coming back, and this is a fundraiser for the South River Educational Foundation. The Harlem Wizards are coming back, they will be playing against a team made up of South River teachers. Um, and the date is Sunday, October 28th at 1:00 P.M. The first hundred tickets sold will be eligible for a raffle of Harlem Wizards memorabilia, so get your tickets now. Tickets purchased before the event are twelve dollars for adults and ten dollars for children. Tickets are available online, and let me give you, it's the, um, S R F E E dot org. That's S R like South River, F like Frank, E E like Edward Edward, dot org. Stands for South River Foundation for Educational Excellence. And, uh, I'll tell you, my, uh, if you don't buy them online, uh, price at the door is twenty dollars for adults and fifteen dollars for children, so get them, get them online, you know, so. And my daughter and I went last year, it's just a lot of fun, it's well worth the money that you're paying to go see these people. They're, they're, they're just fun, they have fun with the audience, back and forth, it's just great. The other thing is, uh, from, uh, Educational Foundation winners is, congratulations to the Apple of My Eye contest winners. Primary school, Mrs. Grumlinfall's class, and elementary school, Ms. Daly's class. South River, uh, District, South River Public School District, District Assessment Schedule. The District Assessment Schedule is available on the district website by navigating through the Curriculum tab, District Testing Information tab, and this schedule notifies all families of any statewide student assessment, a commercially-developed standardized assessment, that will be administered over the course of the school year. Please use this information to plan and prepare for upcoming assessments. Additional information can be obtained by, uh, from Camilla Buffalino at seven three two six one three four zero seven three, extension seven two zero six, or kbuffalino at sriver dot org. Oh, I'm sorry, SRivernj.org. September Student of the Month, sixth grade, Tyler Fanslow, has been chosen by the sixth grade team for recognition as Student of the Month. School is very important to him, and he always tries his hardest. In elementary school, his work ethic has often earned him the distinction of having straight A's. His favorite subject is math, because he likes solving problems. Tyler is a good role model for his peers, and he is kind and involved in many activities, both inside and outside of school. Tyler plans to join the track team, the drama club, robotics club, at SRMA. Uh, in his own time, he's, I'm sorry, on his own time, he is involved in various four-H clubs, such as Junior Council, Fine Arts, and Frisky Paws. With not participating in one of his many activities, Tyler enjoys hanging out with friends and family, playing hockey and biking. September Student of the Month, seventh grade. The seventh grade student of the month is James Brill. James feels he gets good grades by not procrastinating and doing his homework. He does not have a favorite subject, because he likes learning about all things, not anything specific. He likes to do cross-country and track. He also enjoys technology, cinema, and learning new topics, running about new topics. His plans for the future are, are to continue to be a really good student, and eventually a really good distance runner. September Student of the Month, eighth grade. Student of the Month for September in eighth grade is Edgar Torres. Edgar always tries to improve on his grades in school by constantly monitoring his Genesis account. He checks to see if he can do extra credit or earn points to improve his grades. Edgar enjoys the sport of soccer to stay energized and healthy. He really enjoys Mr. Fadden as his ELA teacher last year, because he is chill, yet tough, that's a quote. This is what made the year, oh, that is what made the year so good and interesting. Some of Edgar's hobbies include soccer, calligraphy, decorating, and arts and crafts. He enjoys these hobbies to occupy his time, because he does not play video games unless he is with his younger cousin. Edgar is part of the drama club, and is looking forward to being part of the new production for this year. In the future, Edgar would like to be an architect or a homicide investigator. And that, congratulations to those three, uh, Students of the Month. Uh, the last thing is thank you to the SRES PTA for sponsoring an assembly for students Thursday, October 18th. Stand up, step in. The assembly is being presented during School Violence Awareness Week, with the purpose of addressing the many problems that elementary school kids face. Using music, technology, humor, and student participation, the presenter will teach students how to recognize bullying situations, the different types of si- situations that can occur, strategies to handle a problem, how to, how to avoid them, and most importantly, the importance of standing up for yourself. And that concludes that report.
Anyone have anything else to add? Not the, the council, I mean, oh, probably, I'm coming, Mrs. Park?
Yes, we have a tentative meeting scheduled for November 19th, prior to our public meeting, so I should have an update at our next public meeting.
And, if you can, back.
Sure. Uh, I met with the elementary school PTA about two weeks ago, they're the first ones to have one since back-to-school nights. Um, they're working on all the details, uh, for the fundraisers, for the events and the activities they want to put on for the students, as well as working on those, the details for those events. Um, and as always, the volunteers are always welcome and needed. Um, and then the next, scheduled for the next set of nights, uh, for meetings for the primary school, is, uh, next week, October 24th, at five, at six-thirty. Elementary school is November 1st at 5:30. Middle school, same night, November 1st, at 6:30. They serve in the same building. And then the high school one is October 24th next week at seven o'clock. And so concludes my report.
And, Mr. Rosano, do you have anything?
Spoke with librarian, uh, very, very nice, I thanked her for our, our books. Uh, she wants us to know that the Friends of the Library is going to have a book sale. It's November 8th through the 10th, those are three days that we're off for NJEA convention. It's going to be at the library during library hours. Again, it's November 8th through the 10th, Friends of the Library Book Sale, uh, at the library on Appleby Avenue during library hours. They're also planning what's called a Story Walk, it's going to be at Varga Park sometime in the spring, and they'll keep us updated on that. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
And, yeah, Educational Foundation, please.
Well, Mr. Rosano already covered a lot about the Harlem Wizards, but I can say that, um, the committee met this past Tuesday, they put a, uh, very entertaining flyer together for next week, I think Mrs. Archer had looked at it, it is Harlem Wizards Week, um, to promote the actual event. Um, different things from wearing purple, or Wizards, Harlem Wizards, where we had to clarify, or we'd have a lot of Harry Potters running around next week, otherwise, um, had to clarify that. Um, team jerseys, and orange for respect, really trying to get everybody motivated and interested in the program. They're going to be showing hopefully some video clips from last year's game, and from the promos that we had, from the assemblies. So again, if anybody's free on the 28th, I know it's also the Frost on the Pumpkin Rod, same day, but one o'clock. And that's all for now.
Anything from here, please?
Nothing additional.
And, Mr. Andre?
Yes, I'm, like, so, please. So, good evening, everyone, I would like to add to what Ms. Archer said earlier. The focus group meeting was a success.
Make it real. It's recorded, it's, people can hear it when it's on.
Oh, okay, great, okay. So, good evening, everyone, I would like to add to what Ms. Er- what, to what Ms. Archer said earlier, the focus group meeting was a success. The students were very open and didn't really hold back, which was great, they were all very honest and said their honest opinions. They also told me they really appreciate how the superintendent listened to their opinions and suggestions. They also really enjoyed the food, which, I mean, I thought it was pretty good, too, and they're very excited for the next meeting, so, that's all I have to add for tonight. Thank you.
Great. And, Mr. Roseanne, you have a new business to follow.
Mr. Wailuda, I may, um, I want to point out that, uh, the nurses have asked the Lions Club for the spot camera once again this year, and it's not housed here in South River, it's housed in, uh, the district headquarters, so, District 16J of New Jersey, that's who owns them. And, uh, is able, uh, through the good graces of our district governor, to be able to get them through our South River Lions Club and have them here in the school the week we're away. But I'll be dropping them off at the elementary school on, uh, Monday, the 22nd, and I'll pick it up on Friday, 26th. This way the nurses have their schedule, they know where it's going, they do what they need to do, and I'll pick it up when they're done, which is that Friday. For those of you who don't know what that is, it's a, a way of examining someone's eyes, God bless you.
Thank you.
Not only for the children, but adults also, because when I was trained on it, I was trained on doing it on adults. And it takes a picture of your eyes and what's in them, and somehow or other, on the little screen on the camera, there's a print, there's a printout, and it's in, uh, Eye Doctor Talk, two-point-one-eight XV something or other, and it's, all the information that the eye doctor needs is there. It also indicates to the nurse whether or not the child needs to see the eye doctor. If they don't, and she records what she has to record, they go on their way, if they do, she records what she has to record, but she also gets a printout from the spot camera to give to the child, so the parents can take that printout to the eye doctor with the child. So the eye doctor knows what's going on. They're very excited about it, it worked out very well last year, and, uh, the Lions Club is happy to provide that once again. The other thing I have is one of our seniors, Zach Raffano-Tansy, uh, wanted to, uh, lead a food drive, and he was going to do a homeroom competition. So he talked to, uh, Mrs. Beth Lucas, who's in charge of the food bank, uh, on Jackson Street behind Flyer House, and, uh, she said, "This is great, we love it, how are you going to motivate the students?" So Zach came and talked to Mrs. Birkin, and she said, "Well, why not make it part of Spirit Week?", because she was going to have his friends monitor the homerooms, but her suggestion was to have it during Spirit Week, and the class advisors would monitor their homerooms. And each, uh, um, class had a category, so the freshmen, I think, were canned goods, is that right, Chris, or is it the other way around?
Freshmen are canned.
Freshmen were canned goods, and then the juniors were pasta, this, uh, I'm sorry, the sophomores were pasta, juniors were cereal, and the seniors were toiletries. And, uh, whoever got, the way they worked it out, whichever class got the most items, got points for Spirit Week. So that was a big motivator. And it worked out well, because Zach and his friends were able to deliver two thousand items to the food bank from our students. So congratulations, Zach, and congratulations to our students who really came through. That's all I got.
I have one more item. Um, our new principal at the middle school, Tom Risk, uh, started this Monday. Uh, I walked around the school with him today, he's already activated, high-fiving kids in the hallway, um, so I think he's off to, uh, to a great start, and our middle school now has its own Twitter page, um, as well. And, uh, the last I looked, it has over a thousand followers, so, uh, that's really, uh, in a week, in a week, I, it, it's incredible. So he's posting a lot of things, um, that are happening at the middle school on that Twitter page, and, um, and he's off to a good start.
Great.
All right?
And, Mr. Wailuda, if I just may, uh, announce that, uh, at this year's Senior Awards, there are going to be two new thousand-dollar scholarships. Uh, they will be in memory of former student, or graduated student, Rick Rosenberg, and, uh, board member, Rick Rosenberg, who served on his board for six years and died a very premature death. So his family raised quite a bit of money, I believe twenty-five thousand dollars, giving scholarships to different places, and two of them are going to be earmarked for a thousand dollars each, for here in South River.
And, anyone else? Any other motion for a change of the bill?
The Finance Committee recommends that all bills presented, having been certified by the School Business Administrator, Board Secretary, be as listed in the ASR.
Question?
Second.
Question, Ms. Wilson, for a change of the bill, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? This time, we'll open the meeting to the public, any comments or questions? Any ideas whatsoever, comments or questions, uh, limited to ten minutes. And, name of the dress, please?
Maria, 27 Jackson Street. Uh, I want to start by saying kudos to everything that's going on. I know the middle school principal is the work of heart. I've heard a lot about him, and I heard that he's great. Um, I am here to bring up the bus situation again. I assumed it was just the eighty-four people that I mentioned before, that I had a list of, I'm sorry, that I had a list of. Um, I took it upon myself to actually go online and create a petition, and within days I was able to get over three hundred signatures. So I know it's not only me, and we've contacted over forty bus companies, there's There's no way we can find anything. So if we can get a little help, a push, something, I know it's not, I know that you guys are not required to service us with a bus, the people that live under 2 miles. And that's understandable. We wanted to know if we could maybe purchase seats on the bus that, the buses that are already available, or if we can have someone from the board event or from the school who can actually speak for us so that we can get a bus. We've actually been struggling with it before the beginning of the year, and we still haven't found anything.
Let me answer the question a couple ways. First of all, did it have a group, as you know? Was that a last meeting?
Yes, I was here.
With the same question. And the way I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, the question came up at the end, basically, but I understood that the bus companies would not recognize anyone to take responsibility from, and went from the outside. And they were at least looking for, be able to talk to a bus company. We had said that we were not in business, that that was always handled by from the outside. Now, what happened when bus companies would not talk to you, we don't know. But saying that, immediately the next day, the superintendent had contacted, I don't know whether it was one or two, but bus companies, and had them actually call someone from the public that would be in charge of the buses and the operations, what had, and talk to them. And my understanding was that we even got a phone call from whoever it first was saying, "Thank you for at least letting us, the bus company, contact us." So we did, but even going beyond that, the board took it upon itself also to call a safety and risk management meeting, which they did. And with the superintendent and with the attorney present, we reviewed what situation was. And the outcome of that situation was that we ourselves are not in a position at this time in order to be able to go for any type of courtesy. There are many, many problems that the board has in front of them that they're going to have to resolve. Couple of them, just as an example, so that is, first one, this year's negotiations. And I'm sure it's going to be quite a year for negotiations. Secondly, we stood there and took it upon ourselves to actually take money out of our budget, which we, it's very, very tight, for the security of our schools. In that, by actually taking the money from some areas of our educational system here so that our schools would be safe. We're also looking to enhance that even further by looking at the high school and the other schools, especially the high school, where a best of you upfront for our students. All these items cost quite a bit of money. And it's not a case that we would love to be able to do courtesy busing. But we also recognize our primary purpose is to make sure that our students get the best possible education that we can afford. So we have to look at what comes up as far as priorities are concerned.
I do understand that. And we aren't asking, we aren't asking for you to take anything out of the budget. That's not the case at all. We're actually willing to pay for the bus. The person we spoke to that was passed on by Ms. Searcher, which I have spoken to her in the past, that bus company was charging us almost $1,200 a child. And there is no way that people with multiple children can afford that.
Well, that's no different than what they would be charging us matter of fact, treat them as a courtesy in order to be able to try to help the people out in order to do it. Because as I said, we're always looking at what is the primary things that we have to think of first. And until we look at all these factors that are in front of us, which are very, very important and very, very costly, I think we've got to be very careful. We even reduced our staff. We've eliminated a assistant superintendent. We also eliminated a secretary for the assistant superintendent. And that money had come out of our budget. And that had even been also qualitative pressure solvent to the security of our,
That was mentioned to me as well. And I even offered to maybe organize it myself if possible. We just need someone who can go ahead and, you know, let the bus company know that the parents actually need some busing for South River because they don't, basically, they don't want to deal with the parents because of the catastrophe that happened last year. Whatever bus company they had.
That's what I understand was the reasoning when people came here. And we didn't say we would do it, but the next day, the superintendent of our schools actually did call the bus companies and ask them to talk to you and do the best they can in order to do for you that the school system has backed the responsibility of the parents to be able to press that, to do all the contracting and so on. And at the present time, definitely for this year, it's, I think, out of the question in order to try to save more money in order just for the courtesy busing. And it's not that we don't understand and we don't feel for this. It's the budget system itself. We only have enough certain amount of money in order to be able to run our system. We have to look at the priorities. And as you had even agreed, as we said, the most important thing is to make sure that our students will get the best education,
Of course.
the best possible start that they can. And trying to make, even increase our staff if we're going to make cost sizes more smaller. And when we do that, as best we can. And it's not that your flight is not forgotten or anything of the sort. So all I can say, unless we, can you add to that or the attorney? That's all we can tell you at this time.
It's just, it's just not financially feasible at this point. Because I know you represent a group of how many, give or take?
I have about 350.
Okay. If we were to open up courtesy busing or subscription busing to your group, we would have to open it up to everybody else in town as well. So it wouldn't just be limited to the people you represent.
And that's about, that's over 2,000.
It's about 2,000.
2,000 kids.
Which would multiply the number of buses as well.
So even with us paying for it, there's, there's no way we can?
So the way that that works for subscription busing, and Dan, you jump in if you have other information to, the way that that works is once the district makes a decision to offer that, they have to offer to every student that doesn't currently have busing. So right now, our district buses about 130, or exactly 132 kids who are eligible for busing. And 2,077 of our kids don't currently receive busing. They're either inside of that 2-mile or outside of that mile radius. So we would actually have to offer the opportunity for paid busing to that many students. And just the concept of, number one, we wouldn't get, that there's no way we would get routes to offer busing to that many students, and not that many students would ask for it, right? Not everybody would, would want it.
Not everybody wants it, yes.
Correct. But even if it were half of that or a third of that, we wouldn't be able to get those routes either. And I think there's a challenge statewide, not just in South River or even Middlesex County, with bus drivers. I've heard, for example, of, you know, colleagues who have larger districts with their own buses that can't even get drivers for their own buses. So that's a big challenge across the state. I don't know that we would do any better, to be honest with you, in getting, in getting routes. Nobody's sitting there with an empty bus waiting for us to ask for a route. And certainly not the amount of routes that we would need to coordinate for the amount of children that don't currently receive busing. So that's where that financial piece comes into play in terms of coordinating that many routes and what it would take to do so.
So even, would we be able to volunteer to coordinate it in order to actually get it to work?
Well, that is what's been happening, right? So it has been coordinated by the parents, which is how those 150 kids ended up on that bus, on that paid bus. That is what's been taking place in the district. This year, I think, has been more challenging than years in the past because honestly, of the bus shortage and where those routes are and how expensive they're getting, in addition to the organization and what happened there with that group. But it's a combination of all those things that I think are causing the challenge. But that's, that's what we're faced with. It's not just offering a bus to 150 who used to take one.
No, that I understand. I know it would have to be for everybody.
But we do appreciate you coming to see me and sharing your views with us. And I hope that what we have mentioned to you is understanding and knowing that we are responsible for our entire system here. Appreciate that we do understand, we do try, but we will keep trying. But until we get a win from theirs where what had it, at this particular time, it doesn't seem feasible.
And I do have one more update that I forgot about. That I did speak to the chief of police, Chief Tenetigan, who has agreed to, if anybody from that group or otherwise needs some assistance developing a safe route to school, what a safe walking route would be. He will take your address and he will work with your address from that location to our schools to give you a route that includes sidewalks, crosswalks, and so on. So if anybody from the group that you're speaking to is interested in having that safe route outlined for them, we can certainly connect you and get that for you.
We definitely appreciate that. I think the concern is more of when the weather changes and the young kids are walking to school. Right now, I'm walking with a five and three-year-old. And this morning was brutal for them. So, I mean, it's only going to get worse from here. So that's where the concern is because many of the primary school kids don't walk.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for addressing.
Anyone else? Well, I'm calling a closing question. Question for Jerry?
Niels. Wait, wait. Do we need executive session tonight?
Executive. Executive, that's right. Executive, not closing.
Right.
We have to adjourn. Close session, right?
We're doing the action. Anticipate any action or just discussion?
No action.
Okay, all right. So we need a resolution to go into executive session for now as the personnel negotiations. Anticipated about a half an hour, no action to take and act.
So move.
Resolve that pursuit to section seven and eight. And deal with the meeting yet. Probably subject to be discussed at what event close to the public and personnel.
Did you say, did you say it's litigation also? No, negotiation. On negotiation.
I anticipated that when the egg was discussed, the question will be disclosed to the public when it's been resolved and/or in motion.
Nielsen.
Bush.
Mr. Nielsen, seconded by?
Bush.
Mr. Bush, all called.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mrs. Van?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Rosano?
Yes.
Mrs. Urbatic?
Yes.
Mr. Yew?